Council President, we're ready to begin.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Council Agenda, Township of Persipony Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of March 5th, 2024, introduction posting of notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 20th, 2023, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 26th, 2023. May I please ask everyone to stand up for the flag salute?
Flag allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America. Just to your public, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella. Mr. Musella. Can you hear me? You there?
Yes. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Neglia.
Here.
And Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Okay, also in attendance are Business Administrator Jamie Cryin, Township Attorney Michael Avery, Municipal Clerk Khaled Madden, Council President, we have a corner, may I begin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Upcoming meetings, March 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, this is the regular meeting. April 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting. Going into ordinances at this point. Ordinance 2024-03, in ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 290 Parks, Recreation Areas and Public Lands, Article 1 Motor Vehicles Fees, Section 290-4, No Country Club Utility Fees and Chapter A 445 Fees Compilation, Section A 445-37, No Country Club Utility of the Code of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance 2024-03 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills on February 26th, 2024, and introduced at the February 20th, 2024 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-03 be heard in the second and final reading. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-03. Any motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. Come on up, Nick.
Uh, they call me Akle Kaiwata. How will these fees at the Knoll or...
Wait, hold on, Nick.
Dun 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 dun, all right. How will these fees in any way be used to improve the facility itself, being it doesn't benefit the taxpayer? Now, we can improve the source separation up there, recycle the garbage, we can improve the historical value of that property. It does have some history to it, which I spread around up there. I heard they're getting Rammstein beer up there, and that's really a good thing, because it's probably the best beer this side of the Atlantic. And Greg Zakaria, grandfather's brothers own the Knoll before the Bluefield College, the Leo brothers, so that's completing the circle. So that's a good thing. But what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is these fees and everything, if they don't benefit the town, then should go to make the facility more efficient, more ecologically conscious, more conscious how to control the garbage and to enhance the history of the landscape itself. Because despite the fact that it's a golf course, it is the largest green acres property in Persipony, and it's in a river-sensitive green acres area. And to green acres is virtually neglected. It's not, it's not actually part of the maintenance of the golf course itself. So if you guys can do anything to help these fees improve those aspects.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Anyone else?
My name is Davy Williams, H Jamaica Road. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but thank you, Nick, for giving that observation. Because I've been on the Knoll Golf Committee Advisory Group for a number of years and a member there, and I got to tell you, that group does have a lot of attention to the historic value of the property. And by the way, there's a book recently written by historian about the course, okay, that every one of you should have a copy of, because the Knoll, other than Craftsman Farms, is the second best or most wonderful resource we have as a township. The monies that are raised there go towards making it a self-funded utility. And the staff we have there are incredible, okay? As far as taking care of the township property, the facility, and making one of the best golf courses in the world. And that's a fact. So over 44,000 rounds of golf were played at the Knoll in the last years or so. That brings a lot of people to this town, and it's highly acclaimed, highly rated. That's a credit to the crew. They stay within all of the guidelines by state, all the USGA guidelines and everything else. So, Nick, I appreciate your comment on there, but the funding that is raised by that utility stays within that utility for the purpose of running it, maintaining it, and not having a burden to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Davy. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve, uh, to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2024-03?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance passes. Ordinance number two and three are just there for, just for you guys to peruse. They will be voted on at the next meeting. At this time, we're going to move right into the public session. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, the floor is open to the public to speak on any matter. You have five minutes to speak. We ask that once you speak, you please go back to your seats, and the council mayor may not address the question. Thank you.
Bob Venedzi of Persipony. A few weeks ago, the mayor mentioned that a proposed New Jersey Assembly Bill A4 would replace COA and redesign affordable housing rules and regulations for the purpose of speeding up the construction of affordable housing units. The Assembly has already passed this bill, and it now awaits action in the Senate, where there's almost no chance it'll be defeated. But it may be possible to shame the Senate into eliminating an unfair clause in the bill that will at least reduce the affordable housing obligation that Morris County and Persipony will be assessed with. Little known to the public, and even to many of our representatives, is wording in the existing affordable housing law that exempts 62 urban aid municipalities from having to build any affordable housing units at all. And that's the list that you have, that I gave you, the 62 municipalities. The exemption rules have nothing to do with the amount of affordable housing a municipality may or may not need. Rather, they're based primarily on population density per square mile. Eighty-seven percent of Hudson County and seventy-five percent of Essex County are exempted from any affordable housing obligation simply because they meet the density requirement. However, a high population density has not prevented Hudson County from adding tens of thousands of market value apartments in the last decade. Why shouldn't some of them be affordable? And why is it that Persipony must comply with the affordable housing obligation calculated by the Fair Share Housing Center's methodology, but Montclair is exempt from its 185-unit obligation? New Jersey Assembly Bill A4, which will govern affordable housing for the next 10 years, also contains language that exempts the same 62 urban aid municipalities from having to build any affordable housing units. In the interest of fairness, I think the same methodology for calculating affordable housing needs should be applied to all municipalities in New Jersey without exception. But there's another good reason why residents of Morris County and Persipony should be motivated to have exemption language removed from the new law. The 62 exempted municipalities, which contain about one-third of the state's population, contribute heavily to the number of affordable housing units that are needed at the state and regional level. However, because these municipalities are under no obligation to actually build affordable housing units, their obligation must be absorbed by the remaining two-thirds of the state that do have quotas. Affordable housing quotas for Persipony, as well as for Morris County, are, I estimate, are inflated by at least forty percent because of the exempted municipalities from Essex and Union Counties that are in our region. On my own, I have tried, but I haven't been able to make any headway in drawing attention to the issue of affordable housing exemptions. That's why I'm asking the entire governing body to use its influence, to make people aware of the existence of these exemptions and the way they harm our town and our county... Excuse me. I would also like to urge, I would like you to urge Senator Panaccio to fight to have all of the exemption language removed from the bill. Voters tend to get angry when they find out that certain rules apply to them, but not to others. If there's enough publicity, I believe that the New Jersey Senate can be shamed into removing the indefensible language that allows affordable housing exemptions to exist. There's nothing to lose by challenging these exemptions, and your constituents will have very much to gain by their elimination. Thank you.
Uh, they call me Ak again, Lake Kaiwata. Just quick, what Bob said, in a lot of ways, Persipony set themselves up for this affordable housing because of the overdevelopment. So what else are these corporate real estate people going to do with their vacant real estate structures? So Persipony set themselves up with it. The part that disturbed me, when the police chief was here, and Mayor Barberio says, you know, "We need more police, more police." No, we need enough police, not more police. But the chief says, "We're going to need more police anyway because of the affordable housing." So that cost for the additional police is just going to be pushed on the taxpayers of Persipony? That's, there's something wrong there. You can't just take the residents or a taxpayer of any town for granted that because some developers are coming to town, and most of these units are not affordable anyway. So it's ridiculous. And anybody's living space should be affordable, but because the government doesn't subsidize it, whatever, the market will bear. But we shouldn't have to bear, if that's a, if we need more police, then the federal government better cough up the money for the extra police, if there really is a need for it. We see right away all affordable housing, going to have low-class people, are going to have crime. We shouldn't think that way, and it shouldn't be necessarily so. Councilman McGrath, the replies you gave me to my questions dealing with the pilot deal, I'm a little disappointed in the response, and it seems like, I don't remember any ongoing transparency. I remember the mayor, when he first came in, says, "I make deals with developers, that's what I do." And I go to a lot of these council meetings, and the pilot deals kind of crept in there. But when 900 people show up and they're disturbed, and they make a little noise, that's not inappropriate. That's grassroots democracy talking. So I, you know, there's a, the transparency was non-existent, it shouldn't have happened, and it was a fast-track deal, and I, again, I can't help thinking there's some element of corruption there, because this is the way the country works now. It's a dark money, money is freedom of speech, but it also funds the campaigns for politicians who are in the service of these people who are getting tax breaks. So I saw it on my level as a senior citizen, not so much with the Board of Education, but as this council and mayor supporting a regressive tax system that's already working against the American people. So there's another element added toward that regressive tax system against grassroots democracy, the people who really work. So we're paying for a way of life, and we get very little in return. So there is a lot of transparency. And lastly here, and a part of your response, you say that every council person sees the occasion to learn about the projects well in advance of the introduction. Well, I would hope that all of you would learn and participate, as you didn't before, which I mentioned, about a stormwater utility tax that all this impervious surface around here is impacting. It's not a rain tax, it's a tax on large impervious surface that affects the very water we drink in the young, when you think about it. When you saw all this trash and all this oil and everything, it all winds up in the water. And the tax, like I said, has a loophole in it. And remember, if you go back 20, 30 years, Republicans were the green elephant. They cared about the environment. And that element of the Republican Party seems to be lost, and I think they need to regain it. No, you can't have an economy without an ecology. And a simple tax like that, you should all get together and learn about it.
So, Mr. Homiak, all right, before, Nick, I'm sorry, because you just have to take your seat, yep, and then we'll have Mr. McGrath. Thank you, Nick, for your comments, it's appreciated.
Okay. All right. Are we closing, are we doing an effing, we close close session?
No, no, he's going to make, he's going to respond now.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Homiak, I did want to kind of point out a couple of things, just when I sat there and I looked at a lot of the data, for me, it's really important to understand all angles, because there is no, you know, right answer, there's a best answer. And I think in some of the data I provided you, we've had 312 tax appeals in the last few years. And that's over $2.3 million that we now, as taxpayers, everybody in this room that's a Persipony resident, myself included, we pay for. Additionally, on top of that, you have to look at the revenues we don't pull in from those locations that are now gone. I believe the mayor told me it's around 185 million in revenues that we collect our tax against. So again, that's another three to four million that we don't collect year over year. That combined is over $6 million that Persipony residents have to pay. So when it goes into what happens when we start to lose commercial properties, there is never a great answer, right? If we could keep everybody, it'd be awesome. As I sat with Councilman Musella, we talked about potentially lowering the tax rate from three to two percent. But that also means we collect less tax money, but maybe we attract more people. Or we have to open up to different things. Mayor talked about opening up to things like cannabis for distribution, for cultivation. There's things that we now need to go look at, that we have to consider, because all of these things affect us in town. And if we don't do anything, that means we collect less money. We go from, say, forty percent commercial tax, sixty percent residential, to thirty-five, sixty-five, or thirty, seventy. But that means that we, as the taxpayers, are responsible for catching up. Our tax rates go up. That's what we need to work on, is how do we stop that from happening, so everybody in the room doesn't have to pay more taxes? How do we stop the bleeding and improve it? And I am always open to sitting with anybody, and, Mr. Homiak, in that email I offered you, let's sit down and talk about the data points that I see, and how do we combat that? Because I'm open to it.
Nick, I just want to address something. You brought up about with the mayor and the police chief, okay? It's a known fact that with all this affordable housing and all these new units, there's going to be more people in town. You have to remember, when you talked about the commercial properties, you had people in town for 40 hours a week, 40 to 50 hours a week, Monday through Friday. Now, these people are going to be here 24/7, they're going to be living here, okay? So you're going to have a lot more calls, a lot more calls for assistance by the police department, whether it's for investigations, medical calls, whatever it is, anything that police respond to, they're going to go up, okay? I know, I have many contacts, I've talked to a lot of law enforcement in other towns, that have already had affordable housing units, these apartment buildings that are up and running, they have a lot more calls for assistance in these units. They definitely have a lot more calls. So there are going to be, there's going to be more of a burden on our police department. So I think that's what the police chief was talking about, because I know the police chiefs have a monthly meeting. They all get together, they all talk about different things that are going on in each town, and that is definitely one of them.
So I do want to add one more thing. So we talked about transparency as well. So I sat with the clerk, and we walked through, what is the process for going through these? And one of the big things that stuck out to me is, there's a lot of sessions that people don't attend, whether it's planning boards, zoning board, all these different sessions where these things come up, and there may be one or two people in the audience. Those things get pushed through based upon the ordinances in our town, they're approved, they come here in front of the town council, we approve them for things like redevelopment, they go back, and they go through, what are the things required to go and build those? One of the things that's paramount to me is showing the data out to everybody, and I was going to bring it up in our next piece where we talk about our committees. We are going to go back to our transparency committee, we're having our first meeting on the 11th. So we're trying to bring back where we go and get all that data, and we show back to the public all the information that you're curious about, make sure you have an understanding. In that way, we will make sure that any of these questions, you will be well in advance understanding. What were the problems, what are the things we're up against, and making sure that you have a voice early and often. Like I said, I was just at planning board yesterday, I think there was one person in the crowd, and that was to build a warehouse that, again, you may have come and said, "Hey, I have a different opinion." But there's also some good things. They're improving impervious ground, they're removing a lot of the blacktops, and they're removing what would be wastewater with more chemicals going into our groundwater. So they're actually doing some good things that would probably align to the things you want to hear. But again, I highly recommend you come to those sessions as well.
Can I make a few comments? So I'll start where you ended off. I agree with you, Matt, a lot of people don't come, I used to sit on planning board. However, when there's something that's unique, I think we still have to do our due diligence and let people know, "Hey, this is something special, we have a lot of pilots," and then maybe people will come to those meetings and maybe understand a little bit more. And I'm glad to hear that they're doing, making it more permeable, but that's also part of our master plan, they should be. Everybody that comes to that planning board should be. And the other comment I want to make to Bob is just, there are so many towns and people from other towns that I'm talking to that are putting resolutions about the affordable housing A4 S50 bill, and we're doing that tonight, we're opposing that, adding our voice, Persipony's voice, to the collective voices, and trying to get some of, it's bipartisan, some of the Democratic state senators to understand that, yes, nobody likes this bill. Thank you for pointing out about the exemption parts, because there's so much of that, that's not great, that I wasn't hearing the exemption part, so that's important. And the good news is that it seems like what this, it passed the Assembly, it's gone to the state Senate, but they're trying to change some, they're trying to put in some of the wording to allow towns that like ours, that have conformed the Highlands, for them to consider water and sewer and science and environmental considerations when making those number of decisions. So that's a good, that's a good part for us. So let's keep our fingers crossed, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, just like to ask the council, just to take a look at the consent agenda and the approval of minutes. Before we move on to the presentations and reports, we'd like to take a short recess to go into a closed session to discuss an attorney-client privilege matter regarding a collective bargaining agreement. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Executive Session Resolution Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, collective bargaining agreement, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of those above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the closed, to adjourn into closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yeah, are you going to bring me with you?
Uh, no, we're going to keep you out here, no phones allowed. No, I'm just kidding. And Mr., we said, Mr. Neglia and Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, I just want the public to know, we'll be in there about 10 minutes max, and we'll be right out. Thank you. All right, we are going back into open session. Matt, please have a motion to reconvene into open session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Let me just get a roll call, Mr., Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, here. Oh, yes.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. McGrath. Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Before we move on, I'm just going to turn it over to the Township Attorney.
Sure, thank you. We emerged from executive session at 7:48 PM, where we discussed one matter, which was contract negotiations, which falls under the labor, or personnel exemption, no official action was taken. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Okay, moving along to presentations and reports, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to the mayor. Right on time, Mayor.
Alls I can say right now is, as you know, we're working on the budget right now, and I know we spoke before, Paul, we're going to have these meetings shortly, but we're going to be meeting just to narrow things down budget-wise. I just came from Persipony High School, it was actually fun, students versus teachers and faculty, and it was a slaughter. I mean, students killed them, to put it that way. It got to the point where every point that the faculty scored was 10 points for one shot, so, but it was a lot of fun. And really not much else to add, other than the fact that, as you know, that affordable housing bill that was, well, I don't know if it's passed yet, I think it still has to go to the Senate, how detrimental it's going to be to the Township of Persipony with regards to the number of units that we'll be looking at. As you know, we'll be carrying over 463 units from the last round, so we're going to have our hands full with regards to the affordable housing, as you know. I did speak to the auditor, and right now, we're on a financial stability, but as you know, things can change with regards to, and I've been pounding this home... know, things can change, with regards to, and I've been pounding this home for a while, with regards to ratables being lost in town. You know, we have, God, I can't tell how many tax appeals coming our way. Not just tax appeals, we have companies that will most likely be moving out of Parsippany, so we have to find a way to keep them here, which, you know, we've been successful so far in some of them, but I don't really see a really, you know, it's a pretty much a grim forecast. But that being said, this administration is going to continue to work hard to keep as many companies we can here in Parsipony, because, of course, we don't want to balance this ship dramatically over to the residents, and that's what can happen, with regards to losing ratables. And not only do we lose ratables, it affects a lot of things. I'll tell you what it does affect, and nobody really wants to ever hear it, but it affects the amount of revenue that comes in. Which means, when we don't get the certain amount of revenues that we expect to get in from a ratable, it affects all our departments. It affects the police, it affects DPW, it affects all that. Why? Because then we have to start to make some tough decisions, if it gets to that way, meaning with, you know, possible layoffs in the future and all that kind of stuff, which we're trying to avoid as much as we can. The fact of the matter is, though, I don't, I don't see how we can turn it around, considering these commercial lenders, I mean, these commercial developers are handing over their properties right over to the banks, they're leaving, and we know that for a fact, and we continue to fight it, with regards to, we talked about, the pilot programs. And that's a way that we keep, we keep some companies in here, with regards to Parsipony. Not all, not all pilot programs are popular, but some do work out for the town, and I could tell you, I know the ones that I worked on prior, worked out very well for the town, and they will work out for the town. Well, you just have no revenue coming in, that's a decision that will be the council to make in the future. Because, to be honest with you, a lot of companies are going to be coming in, asking for them, some are going to say no to, some are going to have to say yes to. But that's a decision we're going to have to make, if we want to keep our, you know, this town on stable grounds, stability. With regards to the police department, you know, there's a lot of things that have been going out on social media, and it's really frustrating, and I'll tell you why. We have a very, very good police department. Very good. Probably one of the best in the county, if not the state. And it's constantly being, like, they're not doing their jobs, they're not doing this. You know, we had a Neighborhood Watch meeting, and the meeting was going well. And it got very political at some point, with regards to the meeting. And it's not about politics when you have a Neighborhood Watch. It's basically about what the residents want to hear us, they ask questions, and it got to a point where it got real political. And I'm sorry to the, and I spoke to the two individuals that ran it, and I apologize to them that it got that way. Because what was, their main concern in the resident of Parsipony, or Parsipony, is what? Public safety. That's their main concern. That's what they wanted to hear from our police department that night. They wanted to hear from our chief, they wanted to hear from our captain, they wanted to hear from our tenants who were there, our deputy chief that was there. That's what they wanted to hear. Well, that didn't happen. It got to the point where it got lost, and that's not, that's what that's about, that's not what it's about. As we know, we have, we talked about some of the statistics, and crime has gone down over the last year. Not significantly, but it's gone down. We're beefing up our police department as much as we can. I would like to add some more police officers, but our budget might constrain us from doing the amount, the number that I really wanted to put in there, because we have to be, you know, financially responsible. And a lot of people go on Facebook, and they talk about fiscally responsible, when they don't deal with fiscally responsible. They come up here, they can make any shot they want to make on Facebook, and with regards, even with regards to some of the contracts that we're dealing with right now, they go out there publicly, and I got to tell you something, that's not good. It's not good for you, the residents of Parsipony. And I say that for a reason. Because you're supposed to do negotiations, what? In closed session. You're not supposed to do it out in the public. Okay? And that's a shame that that just happened this week. But that being said, we are doing everything that we can in the town to keep it stable, and we're going to keep it as stable as we can. I can, and I'm going to work very hard, Jamie's going to work very hard, the council's going to work with us, but we have to bring a budget that only works for the town, but it works for the residents. We cannot, you know, we can't continue to, you know, sit here and ignore the fact that we have an economic problem here in Parsipony. We have one. And it can't be ignored. And, you know what? People want to come up and say, you know, affordable housing, it's the mayor's fault, it's that fault. Well, you know what? Affordable housing rules have been in effect, I can't tell you for how long. They've been in effect before, who knows, any mayor. I mean, the previous mayor, I mean, he got hit, he got hit really hard with the affordable housing. Now it's going to be our turn to get hit hard with it. Why? Because the Assembly and the senate, they're forcing something down our throats that we can't handle. No town can be able to handle it, but they're going to force us to handle it. Okay? I'm glad to see that the schools got a fourteen percent, almost a forty percent increase in aid. The township got, I don't think got any increase whatsoever. We, and from what I spoke to our CFO last, no, our funding is the same, it's the same almost every year, ours doesn't increase. So we have to find means to make it increase, the revenues that we get, and I think one of the things that hurts us, with regards to not getting our fair share, because, I don't know if anybody knows what COMTRA is. COMTRA is Consolidated Municipal Property Tax Relief Aid. Well, we don't get that anymore. The state takes it all, and they decide how much we get. That money was supposed to be a hundred percent township money, and it's not anymore. The state directs, decides what they're going to give, well, we collect the money, but we have to give it to the state. It's totally, it's totally unfair. But I am glad that the schools got one point four seven million dollars. That should help them out with their budget, at least I hope it does, because I know one point four seven million on a hundred ninety-seven million dollar budget is less than one percent of an increase. So the state really didn't do well by the, by the school board, by the schools, if you ask me. But could have given a lot more to the schools, but they, they didn't. So, that's my report for today. I can keep going on, and I will till next meeting. I'm sorry I was late, but I had to sort of, I had to be there, it was great, actually. I'll be back, but thank you, I'm council president.
Thank you.
Thank you. Township council? Any member from township council?
Oh, I'm doing our reports. Right, okay. Parsipony Environmental Committee and the Green Team are having a green screening of a movie on May twelfth called American River, and it's about the Passaic River, somebody who kayaked from its pristine, beautiful, environmental, green place where it starts all the way to Newark Bay, and then they meet people along the way. So it's going to be at the New York Public, New York. I'm from New York, but it's not going to be at the New York Public Library, it's going to be at our Parsipony Library on Halsey Road, and I hope we can put it on the town websh, website, to advertise it. It'll be on a Saturday, the day before Mother's Day, and I think it'll be around ten o'clock in the morning. So it should be a nice event. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any member, any other member from township council?
Yep, so I got a couple of reports. So I'll do economic development first. On Thursday, February twenty-second, the Economic Development Team and Mayor James Barberio expressed their congratulations and officially welcomed the Morris Golf Shop to Parsipony Business Community. The new establishment is situated at ninety-six North Beverwick Road. The next meeting of Economic Development Committee is on Thursday, March twenty-first, six-thirty, at ninety East Halsey Road, third-floor conference room. Please note, this is a change of date. Public is invited, please RSVP with Chairman Frank Cahill at nine seven three five five nine six thousand. And also, the Economic Development Committee collaborated with New Jersey Economic Development Authority to offer several grants, I mentioned this a little bit last time, tailored for local companies. These grants aim to assist businesses in offsetting leasing expenses for newer extra space, ranging from two hundred and fifty to ten thousand square foot at street level. Furthermore, there's a provision of five thousand to fifty thousand to reimburse business proprietors for expenses linked to interior or exterior enhancements, and the acquisition and installation of new furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The Economic Development Committee has already engaged with twelve Parsipony businesses eligible for these grants. Newly established business is currently in the process of submitting their applications. Upon approval, the business stands to receive approximately seventy-five thousand dollars in grant funding. So this is really important for folks, especially if you think about the improvements we're making on Beverwick Road. Make sure you're reaching out to Frank Cahill, and again, phone number nine seven three five five nine six thousand, it's right up here in front. Great opportunity for any new businesses. Additionally, I mentioned Transparency Advisory Committee. So, that was not on the books, and I got that reestablished with the members that were elected and announced. And our first meeting will be on March eleventh at six-thirty at ninety East Halsey Road, which will be our first sort of inaugural, inaugural, excuse me, meeting. So we'll be setting up who's going to be the president, all those great things. The expectation is, we would like, again, public participation in this, so that there is not confusion, not questions. And again, everybody here has access to my email, if you want to talk more about this, more about transparency, more about the things you desire to see. As I see Ken in the back there, has multiple times reached out to me, that's what the point of this is going to be, is to make sure that the data is out there for everyone. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Any other member of council? Okay, seeing no one at this time, we have a presentation by Craftsman Farms.
While this is warming up, I'm going to take the mic, because I need to look at the screen. Okay, I think that looks pretty good. So, is the mic, everybody can hear me now? This is the first time I'm making a presentation for many of you. Of course, I know the mayor and Councilman Karifi, and I want to introduce myself, I'm Bonda Givens. I'm the executive director of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. I've worked at Craftsman Farms for sixteen years, and I'm in my tenth year as the executive director. And we have some supporters here in the audience as well. Our board president, Barbara Weiss-Gottlieb, is here. Several of our board members are present, if you want to raise a hand, advisory council members, and volunteers. And I want to thank them for coming out and showing support tonight. I haven't done a presentation for the council for a couple of years now, so my apologies for taking advantage, and this will take me a little bit to get through, because I'm introducing the property to some of you, and I want to take just a moment to explain a little bit about who we are, but I'll try to keep it snappy. So, we already got through this part, I wanted to just introduce myself. And I also just wanted to say, I'm from a little town outside of Nashville, Tennessee, and have lived and worked in New Jersey for more than twenty years, and it's been a great place for my husband and I to live, and I think it's worth noting, with a lot of people leaving, that there is a lot of people who come and stay. So, I'm not going to talk much about history tonight, but it seemed weird to have a presentation about Craftsman Farms without a picture of Gustav Stickley. So I'm hoping if you haven't taken a tour of the property, that you'll come and take a tour at some point. This is a picture of Gustav Stickley, who established Craftsman Farms in the early twentieth century, and there's a photograph of Craftsman Farms at the time when he lived there. He only lived there a short time, and his fortunes began to change around the time of World War I. He sold the property in nineteen seventeen. The family who purchased it, their name was Farnie, and they lived there for three generations. And the third generation mostly rented out the property, so if you've been in Parsipony for a while, you may think of it as a property that was a rental, and there was also a store burned in around nineteen seventy that you could see from Route ten east. So, now it's salt storage, but you might be familiar with that part of it. So, the history I do want to talk about tonight is really the history of this organization and our relationship with the township. So back in nineteen eighty-nine, Craftsman Farms was threatened with development. The township purchased the property, the remaining thirty acres. Gustav Stickley established the property as an estate with six hundred and fifty acres originally, and by nineteen eighty-nine, there were about thirty acres remaining. The township purchased the property, the purchase happened, there was a lot of discussion about what to do over about ten years, and a feasibility study suggested what actually happened, which was, the township purchased the property, and its daily management was turned over to what we are as a nonprofit, we're a public charity. So, the year after, the property was saved from development, and the partnership with what was then called the Craftsman Farms Foundation, but is now the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms, the year after that, the property was designated a national historic landmark. So, I just, just to take you down memory lane, this is what the property looked like when the township took possession. There was some pretty epic rhododendron there, in the front. You could ask Jimmy Walsh about taking it out, I think it was his job. And here's what it looks like today. And back in nineteen eighty-nine, it was empty of all of its furniture, and the walls were white, and here's what it looks like inside today. Our goal is to try to make it as much like it did look to Stickley's time, and we've come a long way, and I'm happy to say, this year, we're celebrating our thirty-fifth anniversary as a museum, as an organization. And this also means we're celebrating thirty-five years of a partnership with the township. And we take the partnership really seriously, we aim to be a good partner to the town, and you know, some of the people, well, surely Nancy Williams here has been involved for all of those thirty-five years, and Davey nearly is long. So, it's a great thing to be standing up here in front of them, and saying that we've made it to thirty-five years. So, I'm not going to, this, all of this is available on our website, but I wanted to point out a couple of things about our organization. One is, our responsibility to the township is for preservation, interpretation, and daily operations of the site. And our annual operating budget is currently six hundred and sixty-five thousand, and it's entirely self-funded. Now, we do receive support from the township, but not financial support. I do want to point out that our caretaker works for the Parks and Forestry Department, he is responsible for mowing the entire property, and for plowing it, and we also get support from the Buildings Department, and really departments throughout the township. So, we do benefit from this partnership in many ways, but the funding comes from what we raise. We have a twenty-five-year operating agreement and lease with the township, and our current agreements are through twenty thirty-one, which makes it sound like something I should probably not even mention tonight, but I'm going to, because our ability to get grants depends on how long that contract is. And in particular, the New Jersey Historic Trust would like to see fifteen years remaining on that agreement, and we don't have that many years. Without that many years, it means that a grant that we pursue, when we get the grant, we will be asked to have a cosigner on the grant, and we can do that. I know we have a nice relationship, but it's something to consider, that if we could move forward with renewing the agreement, it would be good for everybody. So, if you haven't visited Craftsman Farms, or it's been a while, here is a map of the property. There are nine buildings on the property. And tonight, we're going to talk about three of them. The log house, the building that you can see that's kind of connected to it, I'm going to get my, here we go, my pointer. So this is the log house, and that is the annex. We're going to talk about the White Cottage, which is one of three cottages on the property, and kind of isolated from the rest of the property. And I should also orientate you, this is Route ten is right over here, and this is Manor Lane that goes into Powder Mill. All of Powder Mill would have been part of Craftsman Farms, originally, and the Farnie family sold off all of the acreage by the time, except for the Raiding Authority by the time the township took ownership. And in thirty-five years, we have not done a lot with the buildings over here, these are the farm buildings. This is what you can really see from Route ten east, you can see this particular, that's where there's some salt storage now, that the road department is using, in a barn that burned, the barn that burned in nineteen seventy. And we are hoping to get started on some work in the horse barn, because over the years, it has not been really addressed. We focused most of our attention on this area here that's shaded, called the Historic Zone, and it really is the part of the property that most visitors come to. We would like to use other parts of the property, but we really have to address some of the needs on the other side of the property, on the other side of Manor Lane. So, in the work that we do, it's about, at least the work I do, about half of it is with fundraising, and the other half is with preservation. And Director of Collections and Preservation, Jonathan Clancy, is here tonight as well. I asked him to come, because a lot of this is about preservation, and it's, I do most I asked him to come because a lot of this is about preservation, and it's, I do most of the fundraising, he does most of the day-to-day work. But I just wanted to point out that with so many buildings, if we're doing our job properly, we always have a project in the planning stages, a project that's current or about to begin, and one that's wrapping up. And right now, this is what we have. We have a, we're looking to do a hallway restoration in the log house. We are just about to start log-in's restoration, and we hope to soon be finishing up our annex rehabilitation and log house kitchen restoration, which I'm going to talk about in a moment. And just before I move on to talk about some of these projects, I want to just make sure that it's going to be important to you kind of orient yourself. The log house here has this building attached to it that's called the annex. It's the log house, the kitchen, and the annex. And if you've been there before, you'll surely recognize the buildings, because that will become important in a moment. So, in talking about the three buildings that I'm covering, the log house is the most important. It's the heart of the property. It always was in Stickley's time and remains that today. It is the building that people come to when they come to visit. For the most part, we give tours of this building. And it houses the museum's collections as well. We've worked hard to build a furnishings collections that is as good as any museum that's devoted to arts and crafts. So, in the log house, we have been doing some small projects, and for us, this is weird to say, small projects are $50,000 or less. It seems really big, but it's kind of small for preservation. So one of the initiatives that we've started over the last few years, and really probably since I have spoken here, is that we have been going to Morris County Historic Preservation Trust with a grant application. If the project is less than $50,000, we've been trying to match it instead of coming to the township for the match. So the first project was fireplace restoration, and you can see here this photo from the restoration, which was a really fascinating and complicated project. That project, we thought, would be about $45,000. It actually came in at just under $58,000. So our initial investment was about $21,000, $22,000. And so the initial investment was the key part, but once we made that initial investment, then we, what we want to do is roll that money into the next project. And that's the next project. You can see the deterioration of the log-ins here on the log house. We are about to start this project as soon as we can get it going, and our match there will be 20% of the project. It's just under $10,000. And after that, so this is the upcoming one that we're planning for, we are hoping to get started with log house hallway restoration, and this is on the consent agenda that you already, I think you already approved it tonight. I got kind of lost in there in the, throughout the agenda, but it was on the consent agenda. We aren't asking for money with this one. We are asking for support of the grant application. So, anyone who's a grantor, who's giving money for preservation, wants to know you have a stable relationship with the owner of the property, and so the resolution says that the township approves the grant, pursuing the grant, and also the work if the grant is awarded. So we are, this grant is coming due this month, and then, and then it will have about a $10,000 match for it. So I can't talk about the log house without talking about what happened at the log house in 2020. I used this slide another time, and it just kind of pleased me, so I put it back up here. But 2020, a lot of people think of as the year of COVID, which it was. For us, we closed because of COVID in March of 2020. But a few months later, a tropical storm ripped through the property and did really significant damage. So, if you're new to the property, the reason I showed a really old picture of the log house, the annex, is I had to show one that was before the tree came down. So this storm uprooted a massive tree, and it landed on the annex, the building that is attached to the log house. That building was an open-air dining area when the Stickleys lived there, and it was later enclosed. This tree came down, it happened so suddenly, as these things do, it took a little bit to even figure out what had happened. The sprinkler system engaged, flooded a lot of, most of two buildings and almost reached the log house, which would have been a much bigger catastrophe. But as you can see there, the Mount Tabor Fire Department arrived, the Police Department arrived, Joe Janarone's Building Department arrived, they helped us get the sprinklers turned off and into the building of water. It was unbelievable how fast they got there, so we're very grateful for that assistance that day in some really bad conditions. So, some more pictures of the interior. And once the tree was removed, we could see that the upper floor of the building was essentially demolished. So we began to work over a couple of years to plan to rebuild. We do a lot of construction on the property, but this is really in the heart of the property, and it's a, trying to reopen, it's going to make it very difficult. So we elected to remain closed except on weekends during construction. So, we are currently, hopefully, nearly finished with a $1.5 million project. It was jointly funded by the township and by the New Jersey Historic Trust. It's a one-to-one match. So, when we came to the township with a plan, we said we should, we need to rebuild the annex, but it's attached to the log house kitchen, and they both, at the time, shared problems with mechanical issues, plumbing issues, security issues, and we could fix a lot of things if we could do both at the same time instead of mobilizing later. So we were asked if we, if we could come up with half of the funding, and the New Jersey Historic Trust awarded this grant, and in June of 2021, we started construction. And the construction should have been completed in March of 2022. Is construction completed? It is not. So we have been sort of stuck in construction. It has been one of the hardest, challenging, most challenging projects I've been involved with in my career. And I don't really want to go into it further here, except to say we've just faced innumerable delays and many challenges with it. But we are beginning to see a path forward, and the consent agenda included a change order, which is actually a really good sign, because it means that the project is, the administration is moving forward on it, it's being managed, and so, so a change order is a good thing, because when nothing is being issued, then the project just falls behind. So I'm happy to say that we moved from this to this. This is early on in construction. This is kind of where we lagged for a long, long time, but here's what it looks like today. These beautiful windows across the front are meant to refer to what the property looked like when the Stickleys lived there and use this area for dining. For the first time in many years, you'll have a view just like the Stickleys did. So, I do expect that we'll fully reopen in the summer. I don't have a date yet, because I'm nervous about setting dates for these things, but I will invite you all to the grand reopening, and I'm looking forward to that happening. In the meantime, we are open on weekends. We just had kind of shut down the property on the weekdays, but we have a special rate for Parcipity residents, and many Parcipity residents take advantage of the Library Pass program, so they can come for free, just check out the Library Pass. And incidentally, our Visitor Services Manager mentioned to me today that every weekend recently, we've had somebody using the pass, so it's great, so we encourage people to do that. And we also have free open houses. We had three last Christmas, and we'll do more this year, especially once we reopen. So, now comes the part where I actually ask for money. So we have been trying, working to stabilize the White Cottage. It is the building that is kind of isolated, but one of the first cottages built on the property. We are essentially planning to mothball it. It has significant deterioration. We want to bring it to a stable, a stable state. We finished Phase 1. I came in 2022 and requested support for a grant to do Phase 2. The grant is a grant for $268,000, and it's a one-to-one grant. And the resolution I was showing there was the resolution to support the grant and also the funding for it. So what I'm asking for is capital funding to get this project started. The entire project is $268,000. The township, once the, once a project gets underway, will be reimbursed half of the funding for it. So it is initially a significant outlay, but the township's portion will be modest in comparison. And that will bring this building to a good place where we think it will be in good condition until, you know, we can decide, or some future day, to decide what to do with it. And then the third building I want to talk about is the horse barn. As I mentioned, this is not but a barn where very little has done, has been done in 35 years. There's been a lot of buildings to work on, and sometimes trees fall, and it really changes priority lists really quickly. But the roof on the horse barn is in bad condition. This building was a rental unit when the township took possession, and the roof on it is not historic, it's a shingle roof. There's some historic, have some historic fabric on the exterior particularly, but at the moment, it just really needs a shingle roof, and it needs a heating system. Chris Smith, the town plumber, called me a couple of months ago and said, "I've been patching this thing together. I can't get much more out of this system." So, in a future resolution, this one and the previous resolution I mentioned, we'll be asking for $100,000 to make this replacement. I can, we can pursue a grant, but even the best grant, you don't get any funding until two or three years after you write it, if you get the grant. And this is a little more pressing than that, so I wanted to bring it in front of the council and ask for it. I did speak to Joe Janarone about it. He said he thought that the heating system would be, that it would be less than this, so the two together should be under $100,000. We're working on the estimate, and once you get the resolution, it'll have a better idea, you'll have a better idea of what the full cost will be. So in closing, I just wanted to show a little bit about who our organization is today. We have 334-member households. They're spread all over the country. And this is a map of our recent visitors, so it would be, normally there would be more of these little points on it, because we have more visitation than we, in the past, we would have had more visitation. But there's 200 unique zip codes here from people who have visited while we've been most, partially closed for construction. So one of the interesting things about our site is that 60% of our visitors, and just coincidentally, 60% of our members, don't live in New Jersey. And I wanted to mention that we're a National Historic Landmark. There's, we're one of only, you can't really read that from here, but it says we're one of 2,600. Ellis Island is a National Historic Landmark as well. And it just got me to thinking about something that I'll just mention in closing, that I know there are pressures on townships, immense pressure to deal with finances and expenses. I mean, we face the same thing where I work. So asking for money is not something I do without a serious thought given to it. But I do hope you'll think of it as an investment. A couple of years ago, I visited Falling Water, which is arguably Franklin Wright's finest house that he built. It's in a tiny town called Bear Run, Pennsylvania. And, and when I was there, I found out about this consortium of Franklin Wright sites. So Falling Water is one of 31 historic house museums and other kinds of museums that are dedicated to Franklin Wright. So you may know Franklin Wright as, you may not be aware that Franklin Wright and Stickley have some things in common, and Stickley fans tend to be Franklin Wright fans and vice versa. So there's a lot of tourists who are interested in obviously 31 Franklin Wright sites, but it made me want to ask, how many historic house museums nationwide are devoted to Stickley? There's one! It's here, in Parcipity! So, in terms of spending on the property, you already own it, and we're trying to keep the investments modest, but the payoff could be significant. There is a house museum, there's a house in Syracuse that was Stickley's prior to moving to Parcipity that's getting some attention, but as far as I understand, it will be a boutique hotel. The museum that's a multimillion dollar, multimillion dollar museum down in Florida, it is incredible. They do have an incredible Stickley collection, but it will never be Gustav Stickley's dream home. That's the bottom line. It's here, in Parcipity. And so we will always, always have that in our favor. And one of the cool things about it is, we already have the infrastructure here in Parcipity to support the tourism, the tourists who want to come here. I went to the State Tourism Conference a couple of years ago, and the thing that was really clear is that tourists want a comprehensive experience. They want to stay at a hotel that's nice, they want to dine, they want to shop, and we have the ability to give that to them. So we get people to come for a half-day. We want them to come for a day, two days, and we can do that. The investments in the property will help us get there. Visitors want amenities, but the current changes on the property are really taking us two-thirds of the way there. So it's something that I wanted to mention. When it's difficult financially, I hope you'll think of it as an investment. And that is everything I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, sorry, close up. Am I, any questions before I go?
Thank you, Vonda.
Thank you.
Township Attorney?
The only report I have is that after many months, we have a meeting finally with a developer in Glenmont to discuss the roads, and that will take place this Thursday, so I'll report back to you before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavery. Our Business Administrator, Mr. Cryin?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Just real quickly, there is a Ramadan celebration this Friday here at 5 o'clock on the 9th. No, it's Saturday, Saturday, Saturday the 9th. Also on Saturday is the Morris County St. Patrick's Day Parade. It's in Morris Town, unfortunately. Wish it was here in Parcipity. The other item to, that I want to mention is, there's a bunch of open positions here on our website. Please tell a friend, visit if you're interested in a position, or if you know somebody who is. We have some open positions in town, and we appreciate you reaching out for us. It's a great place to work with great people. Also, we just relaunched GovPilot, so our report of concern, and the Mayor's Action Center now is going to be more robust, and every department has been trained on it and will be making sure that it's more useful for residents, and we're answering your concerns better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, happy St. Patrick's Day on March 17.
Thank you, Mr. Cryin. I have no report. I asked the council to briefly take a look at the ordinances for first reading, which will be adopted at the next meeting. Okay, any questions? Seeing none, moving along to the non-consent agenda.
I got Township Officers Committee reports, I have something.
Oh, go right ahead, Mr. Neglia.
Thank you. About a week or so ago, as my role as Council Liaison to the Board of Ed, along with Matt McGrath, met with Allison Cogan, who's the liaison to the council from the Board of Ed, along with Judy Mayer, and it's just kind of like a meet and greet, opening first meeting. We talked about different ways we can possibly share some of the services we both have, try to save the taxpayers some money, and we just kind of threw a bunch of ideas out there. They gave us some needs they may have in the future, and just, it was just a good discussion, good opening round discussion to talk about different ways we can help each other. I think the meeting went very well. We, it was very productive, I thought. I brought some of those ideas and, and some of the thoughts back to the administration, which I'm sure we'll consider some of them in the future, and I hope to continue discussions with Allison as the liaison, along with myself, just keep the lines of communication open and try to get us talking to each other more often. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neglia. Moving along to the non-consent agenda. R 2024-24 approving engineers and architects to provide services to the township of Parcipity Troy Hills. Motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-25 approving attorneys to provide services to the township of Parcipity Troy Hills. Motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-26 approving consultants to provide services to the township of Parcipity Troy Hills. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-27 authorizing the award of contracts for professional services to Michael Lavery, ESQ of the firm Lavery-Slavagia Brontas &amp; Cohen as Township Attorney for 2024, the year of 2024. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Who made that motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kreefi, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lavery.
Thank you.
R 2024-28 authorizing the award of contracts for professional services to Jean-Paul Velez and Alfonso De Mayo as public defenders for the 2024 year. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Kreefi, second?
That was Mr. Neglia.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Kreefi. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Musella.
Yes.
Ms. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-29 authorizing the award of contracts for professional services to Monica Madden of the firm Madden &amp; Madden and Lisa Thompson of the firm Mason Thompson as municipal prosecutors. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yep.
Ms. McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-30 award of contract to Savagia LLP for professional services as township auditor. Motion to approve resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-39 award of contract to Fairview Insurance Agency Associates as broker of record and risk manager of the 2024 year. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Musella.
Yes.
Ms. McGrath.
Yes.